Welcome. What an evening we've had tonight. It's been a good evening and I know it's going to continue. We'd like to call the special meeting of the Live Oak City Council and the Center County Board of Supervisors to order on March 4th at 6:00 p.m., 6:03. I will call the role for my team. Vice Mayor LaCord Guck.
Yes.
Gary, Councilmember Gary Baylin.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Bates.
Present.
And I think I'm here. I'm not sure, but I think I'm here. And we have Councilmember Steve Alborado absent. Mr. Solinger?
Supervisor Solinger?
Here.
Supervisor what?
Here.
Supervisor Munger?
Here.
Supervisor whatever?
Here.
Alrighty. I have asked Supervisor Ron Solinger to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, on to presentations. We have a special recognition award for Norma and Ron Giappanetti presented by the Center County Supervisors. If you would like to share that.
I guess we don't have a mic over here, or do we? Do you have a mic over here?
I can't thank Mr. Solinger needs one.
You're probably right, Jason. I'm not sure I do need it in this small room. But I don't want anybody to miss Norma and Ron. Will you join me up here, please?
There.
It gives me great pleasure to make this presentation and this special recognition of this award. I have known this family, these two, for thirty years or more, give or take a year or two.
Don't give away your age.
Yeah, right. Well, forty-nine again, just a few months ago, right? There's a little story behind this recognition. There's a small church in Live Oak called the Church of the Brethren that only has a few members, fifteen or so that are active, but they have a great daycare center. And about a year ago, I got a call from a gal that's one of the members of that church, and she says, "I don't know if you can help," but she says, "We're in big trouble, and I'm calling others to find out if I can get some relief or if we can get some relief." And she explained the story about how the church had been attacked, so to speak, by a state, an aggressive state auditor that refused to give an inch and claimed that they had, should have been charging all kinds of fees and pay, state charges and taxes. And she gave me a couple of names to call, and I called them. And what they said was basically, they didn't, they were in a quandary and they didn't know what they were going to do next because they were probably going to have to close this daycare center that helps like thirty kids. And so I said, "I don't have the grease," as I call it myself, with the state, "but I think I know somebody that can head us in the right direction." And so I called Laura Nicholson over here, who works for Senator Nielsen, and I gave her the information. And I said, "You know, if you can help, great." Well, I kind of forgot about it, left, you know, the ball on her side of the field. And lo and behold, I picked up the newspaper the other day, and it's telling me that these two folks, out of the kindness of their heart, paid a $59,000 contribution and cleared up all the tax debt, the back debt, that this care center owed to the state of California. And to me, that is top shelf, and I think it's just wonderful that these folks are doing it. Accordingly, this is a special recognition award that you can either put on the wall or maybe hang in the trophy room somewhere. You guys are excellent, just wonderful examples of people that went above and beyond the call of duty. And it's my pleasure to give this to you guys and look forward to working together with you.
Thank you.
You bet. Always a pleasure.
Thank you. There's a couple of people in this room, and Laura's one of them, and John in the back is the other. Laura, Laura, Representative Chris, we met in Sacramento and pulled, I don't want to admit this in public, but I found a nice attorney to work for the state. And we hit it off. We had a ten-minute conversation. So I said, "Okay, send the bill to school ASAP and let's get it over with." And John and Mike Boger, let's see, Mike Boger are the two instrumental ones that could ask me to help out. So here we are. And I'm glad Norm and I could do it and help the community out because it's all about the kids.
Great.
Just as a reminder, the items listed for us tonight are for discussion only, and there will be no expected action on these. On to item two, overview of the Live Oak community and the issues, and we turn it over to our city manager, Jim Goodland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of council. It's fun to have everyone in one room tonight to have an opportunity for me to talk a little bit about the community of Live Oak, which I know you're all familiar with, but as we go through this, I'm hopeful there will be some things that will be new, that you'll glean about what this council, this community has been doing for the last several years to really move Live Oak forward, not just in Center County, but really in this part of the valley. And that's been the council's goal, and that's been what we have been working on. The first slide I'd like to show you, again, this demographic information is not anything that will be completely new to everyone, except for one thing, and that is that the city of Live Oak and the city limits is a community of about eighty-five hundred people. It's been that way for the last, probably four, five years that we've been running that way. However, what I think many people don't realize is that the actual market trade area is considerably larger than that for Live Oak. The trade area is closer to twelve thousand people, and that means that there is existing opportunity in this community without a need to add new rooftops, to bring more people to town, there just simply is a net demand here, here now. And one of the things that we've experienced, and Brenda Astrannick's with you, the Center ADC, who helps us with these numbers, and particularly defining the trade area members, will acknowledge is that we have been in many conversations over the last year with development interests looking at the valley, who will start off with things like comparing Live Oak to some of our other small community neighbors up through the valley, that, you know, we look at Live Oak, but Live Oak's just too small. And then we'll just proceed to point out that Live Oak is actually a larger community within the city limits and a larger trade area than the other communities that we're comparing us to. And what that tells us is that there's a perception problem that's really been defined by the highway corridor, the fact that most of Live Oak is off the corridor and is unseen by most people that travel through Live Oak. That changing that perception has been a big part of what we have been trying to do and trying to communicate over the last few years. And so, again, these numbers, you know, just tell the quick story, we are a small community. We are a racially diverse community. It's approximately fifty percent Hispanic, twenty-five percent East Indian. The numbers change in the market area when you get outside the city limits. The Hispanic population as a percentage goes down, the population gets slightly older, but yet, again, a very good existing market right now here in the Live Oak community. Just a quick overview of the city itself. Again, we're a pretty small, lean operation. Our general fund is, we operate water and sewer enterprise funds, deliver those services, and that's another little bit, three million of our operation, and our special revenue funds, which makes up kind of the rest of our budget, brings in another thirteen and a half million dollars, around twenty million dollars, and is what we operate with. And then you have our capital improvement program that would be another thirty million or so in our adopted budget. Feel free to, at any time, by the way, if you keep this very casual, most of our city councils here are, and so don't feel like you can't interrupt me if you have a question. We are a hybrid community in that we're not a pure contract city, and we're also not a pure full-service city. We deliver about half of our services with our own employees, and that would include administration, which is obviously the operations of council, the clerk, all of our water and sewer utility billing, and all of our council receivables and payables. Our building services, our parks and recreation programming, and our water and sewer enterprise operations, the maintenance throughout the community, that's all done with our city employees, and then we contract for professional services in the area of finance, engineering, legal, planning. And again, as you know, we contract with the Center County Fire for fire protection and with the Center County Sheriff's Office for public safety, or, excuse me, law enforcement. Our current permanent positions in the city is only nineteen, nineteen people, so we do a lot of work in a pretty small group. As I said, the city has been busy in the last few years, really putting effort into planning for things that we can do to improve the overall services and quality of life for the residents who live here, as well as, as we move on to the next slide, the projects that we've actually been able to pursue to put on the ground. And so studies that have recently completed or are underway are ninety-nine corridor studies, which again is a separate agenda item that we'll talk about next. We currently have a planning process underway that we call our downtown core reinvestment project, and that's actually looking at the ninety-nine corridor in the filled part of the city kernel and how we can encourage, you know, reinvestment in the properties along the corridor right now. We completed last year engineering analysis of our historic downtown, which for us is that small area that we were just at, over by the fire station, back out to the highway between Elm Street on the south and Pennington Road on the north. That is an area that is all very old infrastructure. It's like dominos. If we start building one thing, the dominos start falling, and everything has to be touched in order to make improvements. And so we completed an engineering analysis to really see what we were up against, and now we have a pretty good plan of how we can afford and deal with drainage sidewalks, industrial issues, road improvements over in that older part of the community. We're currently working on a bike pedestrian and trails master plan that we hope to see that actually integrated with the Center County plans and the city, the city plans, and to see how we can link our communities and our natural resource assets that surround it, the cycling, which is a heat recreation sport, as we know. Currently working with the Centerville Flood Control Agency on developing our required flood response plan. That will actually come to council sometime in the next couple of months or so for council review and adoption. As most of you know, the Leo Chesky Center was a twenty-five-year business in the community, which was a private women-only quarantine facility that closed down as a result of realignment back in 2011. And we are currently doing a reuse study with a consulting company called Chica, called Chica Concepts, to look at what kinds of other uses a nine-acre former prison could be used for. And it was a unique property that has to be creatively used if it's not to be a correctional facility. We actually have had some inquiries, again, about the possibility of reopening that property as a correctional facility, but nothing that has been turned to a permission or any form of process that we can refer to. We're looking at solar feasibility for our wastewater treatment plant, and we plan for future facilities. So currently, we completed a well site study, and actually, as I go into the next slide, you'll see that that project is on our list of projects that now we're actively pursuing. So these things are now things that we're actually trying to put on the ground, or have put on the ground in the last, you know, few years. First, again, as we just all had the opportunity to, was the Public Safety Center. Can't emphasize enough, as the mayor did, how thankful we are to be able to work with Center County collaboratively to accomplish things that improve this community. And working on that remodel project so that your employees who work for Center County Fire, who work for Center County Sheriff, and work for the residents of Live Oak, that they can be proud of the facility they're in. So we're very pleased with what we're going to accomplish together. We have on the south end of our community a twenty-six acre joint-use soccer park in detention, stronger detention area that is now currently under construction. Again, that's a project that we've been able to pursue collaboratively with funding through Prop 84. But as important as that was, an excavation agreement that we have with Centerville Flood Control Agency so that they could take what they needed, which was there for the levee project, and help us accomplish the excavation that we need to do to turn that into a basin and soccer fields. And so the full project will be five full-size soccer fields. Phase one of the project that's currently under construction will build the first three of those fields. And the way that's set up is that in a ten-year storm, or below that, you'll start to see some water in the lowest parts of the basin. And then as we build towards, you know, a hundred acres, excuse me, a hundred-year bend, that's when you begin to see water production against these recent soccer fields and beyond. So it's a great property that we've been able to work with to accomplish that. And we expect that to be done now, probably late this year, the middle of next year, to have that completely done. I mentioned the well site study that we completed, and that was a new well project, and that we were able to secure funding through the Northern Sacramento Valley, integrated water management planning process, the Prop 84 drought funds. We've secured a two-million-dollar grant through that process to build what will be a thousand gallon permanent well, which will be phase one of a complex, and will ultimately be two wells that size with storage and present filtration. We have to filter all of our wells here. Our water supply is all groundwater, and it's all arsenic-naminated, and we have to filter for arsenic on all of those. Makes it really expensive to put those in the ground. We're improving our distribution system for our water system with a, again, a collaborative project with the Committee of Development Block Program, highway funds, federal highway funds, again, CDBG program income from the county that the county previously committed to that project. And when we get that underway, that project will end up reconstructing, painting the road from Elby Scott, Connecticut, all the way out to the east side town, is the word. And then we will put twelve-inch water lines in the ground and improve our distribution system, which is critical for us to be able to have a greater volume of water on the east side of the community, which is, by the way, where the well is also currently. We built two of, yes? Do you hear this skate park? You know, I'm just talking so fast, I just moved right past it, but thank you. I'll come back to the skate park. The, this Live Oak Skate Park is a, I think about a nineteen thousand square foot skate park that if you're familiar with where the league fields are by the Live Oak Community Building, that triangular piece of property that's right behind Center Field on the Center Field, that will be the community's new skate park, and that will actually be under construction this year. And that will be just something that the skaters in this community have been asking for for very long time, that we were able to fund. Live Oak Prep Trail is a one-mile, class-one bike facility that is somewhat parallel to the highway on the old Electric Railroad right away. We have four phases of that. We've been able to construct phases one and three, and we'll be looking towards funding phase four and phase two in the years to come. We put a new signal at Elm Street that some of you may like or dislike, depending on the kind of thing that you go through there. Critical for safety in this area. We build new sidewalks with a Safe Cross to School project here behind City Hall and Markham Road, and again, collaboratively with the county. And that's a theme that you keep hearing tonight, that we've enjoyed a very good working relationship with Center County, and we're going to do about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of open-end projects by being able to pay you back on the county's bids to be able to do those projects here in Center. We appreciate, again, that, that, our collaboration. Any questions about any of those projects? Just anything that should resonate, because there's just a lot of activity going on in this small town in terms of trying to improve the community.
Jim, where's the location of these soccer fields?
If you can see our land use map on the back wall over there, there are two big, big blue spots, kind of on the south end, one is our sewer plat, that's the one that looks kind of like a red tangle with a tail. And just to the right of that, you'll see a property that is that twenty-six acre spot. Scott, could you?
Would you like me to go, please?
I was looking at somebody that was close by, he was quite ahead of town here.
Scott Ross is our city chairman.
Yeah.
I don't know whether you can see it past the screen or not. This piece right here, can you see that past the screen there? So it's a sort of, sort of triangular-looking piece here.
It's a piece that we were able to purchase with the Altrans about five or six years ago.
Any questions?
What about a housing construction starts or anything along those lines?
We actually had a hundred percent increase in single-family home permits this last year. We issued the first permit that we've issued since 2010 for single-family homes. And so, again, a big housing push in the mid-2000s, between roughly 2004 and 2010, there were over seven hundred new homes built in the community. And the KB Home, which still has about a hundred and fifty lots, pulled fifty-eight permits at the end of 2010 and built those out over eleven and twelve. And those were the last permits that we issued until the one that we issued here this year that that house has been under construction. We have built multifamily housing. We did a complete renovation of an old farm housing complex over on Make the Park, just behind City Hall. That was reconstructed as a fifty-six unit affordable housing complex, and we're in the process now of building additional thirty-five minutes of senior housing in that same complex. And then we have another fifty-six unit affordable housing project that will probably, if financed, be under construction on the south end of the community next year. But the single-family home activity has been next to nothing. Just issues and opportunities that, as we kind of continue to look to the future, economic growth is critical to the community. As I started and shared, the work that we've been doing has been trying to improve the overall look and feel, lifestyle of the community, but also position Live Oak to be a community that becomes attractive for investment. And so jobs and tax base are obviously what we want to achieve. As mentioned earlier, we know from a retail standpoint that we are actually underbuilt, we are not overbuilt. There is opportunity that exists today for the vision of retail investment. Larry asked about home building. That is an issue. And we have over six hundred lots that are currently approved and intended in that. We have, as of the end of this year, we're a subdivision that went into bankruptcy that we negotiated, settling in with the bond company. We will have a hundred and ninety-two fully improved lots in that subdivision, plus the hundred, a hundred and fifty or so in KB Home. The city will have over three hundred, I've heard, fully improved building lots available right now. And then again, we have had the new multifamily housing projects that we've been working on. That housing has to be matched with services, businesses behind jobs, and so that's why we are obviously very interested in your Center Forward project that the county's been working on. That's why it's on the agenda tonight for us to talk about together. An infrastructure key for this community, we have, any of our new growth areas are currently unserved by water and sewer. So getting infrastructure to those areas where we have the opportunity for new investment in the community is critical, as well as we just have aging infrastructure throughout the built community right now. And so that's going to continue to be a challenge for us. I think that's the end of that summary. If you have any other questions, I would be happy to address them.
I'd just like to make a statement. One of the interesting projects or possibilities here is the Leo Chesky Center, at least as far as I'm concerned. It's a great campus over there. Traditionally, it's always been used as a women's prison, but it would make just a great campus for some, like vocational education, where, like the Center Campus, is, you know, the classrooms are designed kind of, you know, as just classrooms and study hall kind of things. Over there, you know, the whole building, the whole complex was built, you know, to commercial standards. And, you know, so if we could maybe think in terms of making that into some type of a campus that, you know, we live in a great ag community and use it to train kids in welding and manufacturing and that sort of thing, would, in my, at least in my opinion, benefit our community to, you know, a greater level than having it remain in the same type of function that it's had over the past years.
Anybody else have any questions, please? Okay. Thank you. On to the ninety-nine corner plan.
Thank you for sharing our story. Yeah, the next item that's on the agenda is our ninety-nine corridor plan. Again, we talked about our economic growth and a priority for our council in terms of achieving that, completing improvements to the ninety-nine corridor really is the key for the community's future. And so we have been at work really since 2011 to begin to progress. Highway ninety-nine functions as Live Oak's main street. If you look at, again, that land use map for the expanded general plan area, you'll see that the center of the community is the Highway ninety-nine corridor. And so as we build out the community, this corridor will have to function as Live Oak's main street, as the gateway to the community, but yet still function as a state highway that was freighted, was agricultural product, and does so in a way that is not frustrating everyone concerned. And so we need to plan well to be able to see those things achieved. The council started back in 2009, is probably when we secured funding, to be able to complete what is now known as the Collaborative Streets Gate Master Plan in 2011. And that project basically was the thirty-thousand-foot view of the corridor in terms of what it would look like, again, as a highway as well as the city's main, main street. We then moved on, working with Caltrans and Seco, and I have to emphasize that Seco has been a good partner for the city of Live Oak with regard to this project. After we completed the master plan, we actually sat down with them and said, "We need to make progress. We can't just keep talking about this forever, or have this part of ninety-nine neglected, as it, you know, has not been a top priority in the past." And they actually began to strategize with us how we could move forward, all of the required studies that we would need to do to go from basically the beginning to the point where we were ready to move on to final design and construction of the project. And so that is... And so, that has been a great partnership that we've had. That led to the completion this last year of the project's study report and the project initiation document with the full corridor. And that looked at the Sario Road and North Riviera, all of the improvements that would be necessary to basically four lane the highway completely through to the Lido corridor to remove the hump in the road. Any of you that have stood at the corner of Pennington Road and Highway 99, to see if you could look past the top of the road to the other side, you realize how large the hump in the highway is. Caltrans knows that it's unacceptable from a ADA standpoint, and they are, again, working with us to see how we can, we can move this forward. The next step for us is that we now were able to secure funding through Secog to complete the project assessment of our determination document for Phase One, which is basically the built corridor of the community, so roughly Ash Street to Nevada Street, where we have existing development on the corridor. That's Phase One. I will show you the phases next. But we are working to complete that, and that will take us through the end of '17, at which time concurrently, we'll be looking at how we can put together the pieces to actually run the project, and then we will move on to complete Phase One of the project, hopefully by early into the next decade. This is the project area that we're talking about. Again, it would be from the Sario on the south to Riviera Road in the north, which is basically the boundaries of our current general plan project area. The project would be in three phases. The first phase, again, would be the built part of the existing community. And then the transition area on the north would be Phase Two, followed by the transitional area on the south, that's Phase Three. The design for the transitional areas is different, and we'll see that next. So for the transitional areas from the north and the south, it would still be a four lane highway. It would have the median that would separate it, and it would have, again, landscaped sidewalk areas on both sides of the highway, both, again, north and south of the existing built community. And then the area that would be a built part of the existing community would be four lanes and a continuous left hand turn lane and street parking. And again, our master plan really has that corridor looking, again, like a main street with those, focused more towards the front of the properties. And Scott Rolles, again, our City of Generics has been with this journey from the beginning. Have I missed anything critical from that description?
I did that quite well.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. The preliminary cost estimates for the project, the Phase One, which is downtown corridor, would be just over $9 million. The north transition area would be the same, just over $9 million. And then the south transition area would be a little over $11 million for a $30 million project coming out through the corridor. And I think that's it. I guess final comment on the plan, and then again, if you have to answer any of your questions, is that we know that when we go to actually see programming of the dollars for this, that we're competing with other highway projects. And we know it will be critical, and we actually have to award support when it comes time to see programming for these dollars. And that's a big reason why we want to educate you, and have you fully aware of the reasons and the steps involved in this project.
This has been one of my projects since I've been with council. And this is something I've wanted to see happen in our community, is to have State Route 99 lowered, get the crown out of it. If any of you have sat at Betty's Restaurant and had dinner and look out their window, you're even with the center of the road. We have a lot of kids that cross it, and, you know, we have strollers and bicycles and handicap wheelchairs and so forth. It really needs to happen. And so, it's something that I keep bringing up and don't want it to let go, and I'd love to see it. I wanted it to happen yesterday. You know, I know it can't, but I was like, yesterday I want it to happen. But, so this is something I've worked on since I've been on the council. So Jim's been, he keeps hearing me.
So, again, I'd like to just kind of add, in Phases Two and Three, to the north and south of the city, is a real opportunity for Southern County to maybe utilize the rail services here in the county, because that rail really disappears outside when you get to the south of town. Once you get into north of the city, that rail goes back over to the other side of the river. And so, by looking at Phases One and Three and the widening of the highway down there, you know, the possibilities of industrializing that section even becomes even, you know, more attractive. And especially with the rail service potential down through there, that, you know, we look at inside the city limits, but, you know, there's great potential out there by taking care of the highway, north and south of the county. And then I just would like to say that, you know, you guys have done a great job with the highway down, down south of Utes City, down through the county. You guys have really done a great job. That commute is so much better, and so, I think what we're looking at is now to extend, you know, that type of work to the north here.
With the chair?
Yes.
I would just like to make some comments, and probably why we did the Highway 99 improvements is because the majority of our constituents are traveling down those roads for their jobs. And so, I don't see a big push where people are going to Chico for a lot of stuff for jobs and for opportunities in that respect. That is, I mean, I'm not opposing any funding that you're trying to get on happening in 99. But also, I think one of the biggest concerns I hear when you hear of Highway 99 improvements is that lomo crossing. And so, that's one of the biggest things where people are saying, of course, accidents are just going to happen nonstop. And so, I think, you know, from a county perspective, one of the things that I'm going to, one push is, you know, make sure that, you know, the safety of those people that are driving, you know, ahead north, that there is that safety concern with lomo.
I don't think any of us disagree with the safety of lomo, but I will say you get a lot of Chico, Ridley commuters going to Sacramento and Utes City. We get a lot of commuter traffic from the north to the south. Yes.
If I might piggyback on something Councilwoman Valen mentioned, you talked about the value of the railroad, especially, you know, south of town somewhat, also north of town. Still a little bit of Brenda's thunder, but, you know, she talked to us about the fact that one of the most popular properties that she has people looking for in our area are properties that have access to both rail and the highway. And we have a unique situation where we can provide that. And I think that opportunity is here for us to bring jobs to this area, which we really desperately need, and help industrialize our parts of the world and help grow Southern County north as the Southern Corridor program is developed and designed to do. So I hope that that would be something that you'll consider as well, too. There's a lot of growth opportunity here, and that those kinds of properties really don't exist everywhere else, so it's very specific and special occasions.
Anyone else?
Just a question on, how far along do you know with Secog is, on these phases, or considering indication from Secog at this point?
Again, the planning work that's being done was the completion of the PSR project initiation document, which is the first required planning document for any other project. And so, that's been completed. And then again, we have fully funded the next required document, which is the PADE document, and Caltrans have partnered with the city of Lido, starting that process now. And they estimate that that will go through 2017 to complete that planning process.
The work that was done in Ridley, we was told that that was about a 10-year project. So from the beginning to the end. And I've been told, just in little conversations, like the one I had over there at Utes City the other day with Matt Carpenter, that it's, apparently, things are moving a little bit quicker than what the normal pace of these projects are, might be, but that's part of the viewpoint.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I wanted to see if there was any indication. I'm the newest member of Secog, so keep my eyes open and see how that looks. And then the question for Southern County, I don't know if we have lomo crossing in the mix with Secog, do we, at this point? Or is there, what's going on there?
Diane could probably guess.
Because that is a really good point. Supervisor, we're going to see if that's admitted.
No, I think that, you know, that's something for our planning staff to look at.
So Lido can jump ahead and we can.
I just didn't, I didn't know if that was already in the plans.
Yeah, I'm crying.
Personally, I think, you know, as far as Southern County goes, if we can pull, there's two highways that go up, you know, up north and south, and, you know, they're trying to pull some of that traffic over on 70. But the more we can do to pull that traffic and that commuter traffic down through 99, it's only going to benefit the businesses and the look that we have for the county and the city. And so, if we can decrease as many bottlenecks as we can, provide more opportunity for traffic to pass, you know, some passing lanes and such like that, which is what we're proposing to the north and south, which you don't find north of Ridley at all. I just think that we have a great position here to really make a difference in the economy of this north-Southern area.
Anyone else?
I would just say that whether Gary's right or wrong about whether it will happen, without this, it won't. I mean, I think that's something for y'all to consider. Without this, that growth will not happen. We won't see the improvement that our citizens deserve and need, and we won't be able to bring the jobs to them that we need. So I hope that that'll be something y'all can, that.
And you'll keep hearing.
All right. On to item four, progress of Center Forward Economic Development Planning. And we have with us the Uba Center Economic Development Corporation, Brenda Stranix. Come on in.
Want me to present for you?
Or if you want to just.
It's up to you guys.
I don't care. It's a study session. We're not formal.
How about I sit right here?
Not.
Did you want a microphone? You can tell me.
Now you guys can hear me. I've got a strong voice.
Okay. Speak up.
See? Yeah.
Use the right button.
The right.
Not, not the wrong button, but the right.
This one? Okay.
And we love having you here, Brenda. Do you know that?
Thank you. Thank you. Well, you know, I have a really neat opportunity in that I get to work with both sides, all sides, actually. And it's really neat when we get to see projects like we did tonight. I was very proud of both of our communities. I was proud of the work of the EDC in facilitating that. And I look forward to meeting one of those projects as well. So thank you, council, board of supervisors, for allowing me to kind of provide an update for the Center Forward project. By way of background, the Center Forward, the Center Forward is a strategic planning for the unincorporated areas within Southern County. It was initiated about a year ago, maybe a little more, by the board of the direct board supervisors to develop a strategic plan and a course of action for economic development, sustainability in Southern County. Really glad that the board decided that it was time that they do something formally for economic development, specifically for the unincorporated areas of the county. Priority has been given, and will continue to be given, to develop the plan from the ground up with the input of stakeholders. We've seen a lot of times when a development area is put on a map, and the property owners affected are never consulted. And so, it stays as an undeveloped project because there is no buy-in from those stakeholders. So we're doing that. I'm going to kind of lead you through the process here of what we've done. So participation by the local businesses and leaders will be incorporated into each step of the process. The final plan will identify specific projects and priorities and outline opportunities and solutions to address each of the targeted actions. Simply put, strategic planning for the unincorporated areas of Southern County. So where we've been, we held two stakeholder meetings early in 2014, pretty well attended, specifically with regard to Lido city staff and council members, as well as the members of the SOUPs and staff on the Southern County side, and the general public, the business community. We gathered input and guidance from those local folks that are those stakeholders. The ad hoc committee, by way of introduction, is Supervisor Munger, Supervisor Flores, formerly Chairman Solander, who has now replaced himself with Supervisor Flores, Jim Arkins, myself, and Kristi Moore with the Ferguson Group. So we have some federal dollars kind of hopefully behind some of these things once we get identified. And we have held many meetings of the ad hoc committee to kind of ferret through the information we gathered at the stakeholder meetings, the two initial stakeholder meetings. So where we are, we have identified through those stakeholder meetings, a number of areas that we analyzed for potential development that line up with Southern County's general plan. It was really important for us to make sure that we were staying in alignment with that document and those planning documents. The group eventually agreed through a system of determining why something wouldn't work, elimination, that the area from the north of Eager Road to Clark Road, along Highway 99, would be our first tested area for development. Parts of this area also align with an employment corridor that was already identified in the general plan, which means we won't have as significant a need for zoning changes and things like that. So that was good. There's industrial development zone for the area as it is. In order to ensure we're not making development plans for disinterested property owners, we are now conducting one-on-one interviews to measure their interest, their support, and even possibly their existing plans. Some of them may already be in that development mode because of the general plan activity that took place about four or five years ago. Simultaneously, we are conducting an industry cluster analysis. That has been completed, and we're currently working on a talent gap analysis to assure that we are preparing to meet the workforce needs of whatever our growth trending industries that we target for these growth areas will be met. We have to make sure that we're doing it all at the same time, because we do have some workforce issues in the community. We want to make sure those get addressed as well. And so, oh, I have one too many. How do I go back, Jim?
Left.
There we go. So what's next? If there's a need for rezoning, we'll begin that process. You all know that that's probably not the easiest part of this, but it may be necessary in the area. A lot of the area is currently zoned ag and it's industrial. We need to determine the feasibility of connecting with current providers of water, wastewater, et cetera, and estimating those costs, and then begin looking for the funding to support that infrastructure. Without the infrastructure, you know, these projects are going to be much more difficult to get done. So again, it's much like the Highway 99 corridor, it's always chasing those dollars federal state to make sure we can get through these, through our projects. And so, just to recap, we have some challenges and opportunities. We have a ways to go. The board of supervisors are committed to the process and anxious for the outcomes. We must have the support of the existing property owners. We need to resolve any land use issues, et cetera. We need to identify the infrastructure and workforce training needs, consider and develop a local incentive package, if that's what we intend to do, and secure state federal dollars, and begin the marketing effort for recruitment.
Any questions for Brenda?
No questions, Chief Chair, but I'd just like to make a couple comments.
No questions, uh, to the chair, but I'd just like to make a couple comments. First of all, first and foremost, this, this all involved with the general plan of the board of supervisors, and our state for a long period of time, and we had several outreach programs for the community, and within that, those outreach sessions, citizens told us where they wanted those jobs to be located, so that's why we opened up the planning for those areas. And we designated land in Sutter Side, and it had industrial and commercial components. And let me tell you the reason why we did this, was for the mere fact that the last time that we brought in jobs here in Sutter County was Cisco's. Cisco's was built like seventeen, eighteen years ago, in South Sutter County. That particular project, from when it started, from three, seven, you know, it was seven months to finalize, get done. That same project today would take three years, right? You try to bring in a business to Sutter County and show them a piece of land, and say, what do you think about moving your, your business here to Sutter County? And they say, yeah, I like it. And so, give me three years in order to get it to the board of supervisors, and pass all the, the bureaucracies and policies that we have to deal with. Good businesses aren't gonna wait that long. You know, they just, I think I'll find somewhere close enough to go, you know? So we made it top priority with our planning department and with Brenda's, our department's well, the EDC, bringing in jobs here to Sutter County, that they give it top priority. That means, I'm sorry, that if, if your, you know, lot split has to sit on a side for a couple more months, because somebody else is bringing in jobs to this county, that takes top priority for us. And so, it's been reiterated to our planning staff, to Mr. Arkins' position as our CEO, all the way from the top down, that jobs is the main focus here. And so, you know, so when we're looking at different areas, you know, and, and trying to cut through the bureaucracies that, that, you know, bring in businesses that they have to go through, and you, you guys hear the same things, you know? It's like the loopholes that people have to jump, jump through, and why is it still sitting on this person's desk? And it's not being taken care of? It just doesn't happen, you know, like that in Sutter County. It's actually, the process is moving out fairly quickly. And I'd like to continue with you very quickly. And I think Brenda's doing an, an awesome job, working with her committee and moving Sutter Forward. I just want to take it to the next step, and just say, hey, you know, you brought in that whole, you brought Cisco, you've done, brought in Sacramento Valley Patent, those are businesses that have, you know, very, very high infrastructural needs, all right? And so, obviously, if we're bringing in other job partners that, that do need the high infrastructure, we'll probably have to partner with someone like the City of Uva City to get those things on that, so.
Any questions?
Well, I, I just wanted to, it would be great, you know, once this, this area is defined and, and things seem to be moving along, is to have a real good reason to, to put a sewer in, you know, a pipe down, right down through, just give us a reason to put it down through there. And, and we, as you well know, have, have just the right facility to handle any wastewater, you know, type of needs that any industry is going to, to have. If we had some kind of reason to, to get that pipe in and get that part of that infrastructure there, you know, you, it's like, you know, you're gonna just have, it's just gonna be more attractive. That step's gonna be done. It's the same thing what we're doing with the water to, to the north here, is, you know, it's a little bit out of, out of the city range, but that, that well site up there is just, just hundreds of feet from Highway ninety-nine and potential to feed into that. So anytime we have an opportunity to, to really get some of that infrastructure in, it's going to cut some of that time down. Seven months is just outstanding.
Seven months is a long time ago.
Yeah, but that would be good to have that.
Let's make it six, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and to address your, the Leo Chests Center concerns, you know, obviously, I, I'm with you as far as like, trying, trying to find, you know, a, a different venue to operate, and, and I think Supervisor Flores, he does a good job of thinking outside the box a lot, all the times, and, and read that business department with him. You know, myself, you know, my wish list, I, I'm with you, Gary, you know, I'm with high school students every day, and we know that all those high school students are not going to be going to college, so to bring in a vocational, you know, instruction and have those kids that aren't going to, to those colleges, learn a trade or, or learn a certain amount of crap, I, I'm all for it. Right now, I, I see it as though that we've already started that, kind of that vocational, not vocational, but that educational trend right there on Highway ninety-nine with putting in that Eagle College site, and I think more people will follow with, you know, within that area, in that zone, the area within, what is that, by, Peace?
Peace.
Yeah, Peace Road. And so, but I'm, I'm more than open to, to hearing the different opportunities for that Leo Chests Center. Obviously, I'd like to see that, something happen within that program as well.
Maybe we can get a tour of that.
I was gonna ask you.
I'd love to do that, yeah.
You've not seen it?
No, I haven't.
Oh, I can tell you what I think of going there.
Okay, great, yeah. If you can get a tour, that would be great.
We each have our own thoughts, right?
I just want to follow up on some of these comments, I think, for me, being new, I get to use Ron's word for a little while.
Right on.
But, uh, being new, I'm just really thrilled to be able to be a part in, uh, working on Sutter Forward Project. I know the EDC have been working really hard along with supervisors and other members of Sutter County, and pushing really hard, and what's really excited me about this meeting tonight was, first of all, opening the, the center, showing them what a collaborative effort does, and what it looks like afterwards, and what a quality project comes out of that type of collaborative effort. And it's just a demonstration of something small that can become something bigger when we work together and make it happen. Listening to Supervisor Whitaker's words tonight, I think is really critical, you know, for us, it is about jobs and, and improving the economic developments and economic situation of our citizens in this area, for sure. And I'm so excited tonight just to be with you guys, to be able to hear some of your ideas, and then being a part of the Sutter Forward and knowing that north of town, Uva City, north of Uva City and into Live Oak is our priority for that growth in this Sutter Forward project. So we are looking, and I think listening to these ideas that you bring forth, it's really critical that you keep bringing those. I'm on the team and speaking to several of the property owners that you guys know here, and maybe you know some of them and could actually help out. We're looking right now to one half mile on each side of the highway, and we're also looking at some of the, some of the area in the south of Live Oak that you already have in, in the city, or, yes, in the city.
Industry.
Yeah, in industrial zone, and there, there are a couple of projects that are people interested, and one thing that, another thing that really excited me was the fact, and I didn't realize this until coming on the board, that you do have the infrastructure here already, actually more so than the city of Uva City, no offense to the city, but you do have it here, ready to plug in if we, if we were to bring some industrial light manufacturing to it right away. And then the idea of adding a, a training component, maybe to Leo Chests Center, maybe not, but somewhere that, that you would allow to increase the training and the skills of your, your local community here to be able to provide the skills that are necessary for those jobs, I think that's the selling point, right? So when we bring, when we bring people here in the next several months to meet with you, we're looking forward to making sure that we have those iconic selling points and making sure that we get everybody excited about coming here with, with the, with their different companies. And Supervisor Whitaker says, I think it's up to us now to make sure that we move things along quickly. Uh, one thing, I volunteered in Sutter County, if anyone wants to start a business, just call me and I'll walk them through the whole process, I mean, because I think it's really critical right now that we are trapped, that we attract business, and that we support them all the way, I like to say, roll out the red carpet for business and get them here, because we need them. So thank, thanks for holding this meeting tonight, too, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. I, I like the, the Sutter Forward, I'm, I'm glad to hear where you're actually looking at from Eagle to Clark, because that is really close to us, and we do have, you know, the, the treatment plant that could facilitate that, could help in, in a lot of ways. Not only that, you're bringing jobs that actually are going to be close to our residents, you know, so that, that's a, it's not so far, it's not the south into Uva City or, or further out in the Sutter County area. So that's really encouraging, I, I didn't know that, so that's good.
And it includes that area of your concern, Supervisor Whitaker, in that Lomo area?
Yeah.
So that infrastructure.
See, then that just brings me, if you do that, then we need to really focus, too, on ninety-nine, because that's gonna make it all, see how it all fits? It all works together, it all works together. Is there anyone else on anything else on this?
I just, you know, I, I like pictures, so that, so that we have an idea of what things might look like. I don't know if, you know, this Sierra Nevada Brewery in, in Chico's, it was a great-looking facility, has, you know, has a lot of different components, but what, what they did was they, they actually have a spur track off the main line going into Chico. I don't know if any of you guys have ever seen that. But that, that's, that's what can take place. And we have one, one, one spur track up here at, at Moley Mill, but you can always, that, that, you know, has great potential, and, and, and so it's a nice place for what could be, become very viable in, right up here in this region.
Okay. On to the next one, which is the Live Oak Riverfront Park. Megan, please. Welcome. Nice having you here.
Yeah, it's nice to come up here.
And I can tell you stories about the Live Oak Riverfront Park.
I'm sure you can.
Yeah.
I probably can tell you stories, too.
Yeah, well, mine, mine are fun, mine are, mine are fun stories.
So, my name is Megan Greavy, and I'm the Director of General Services for Sutter County, and part of my job is to manage the Live Oak Riverfront Park, as well as the three other small boat launches that we have. Those are all in our Parks and Rec Budget Unit. We don't separate them out, so some of the, some of the expenses that I'm going to give you include all of them, but I do have some other things that we have broken out a little, so I'll be able to give you some of that. The last time fees were revised was on May twenty-eighth, and they were approved by resolution, Board of Supervisors. Currently, your fees at the park, the day use and parking fees are five dollars per day, per vehicle, with or without a trailer. Annual day use fee for thirty-five dollars per vehicle, with or without a trailer. Camping fees, one site, maximum eight persons, two vehicles, fifteen dollars a night. Groups of fifty-one to sixty-four, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per night reservations are required, and groups of sixty-five or more is a hundred and twenty-five dollars plus two fifty per person over sixty-four, the number sixty-four. So that varies depending on how many you bring in per night, again, reservations are required. So in fiscal year twenty thirteen fourteen, total expenditures, and this is for all of the launch facilities, as well as Live Oak Park, which is actually the biggest part of the whole budget, was two hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. That includes maintenance of the park, maintenance of all the boat launches, camp host costs, insurance costs, administrative costs. So one of the things that I broke out for you, so you would know, was man-hours expended in the Live Oak Park area exclusively. So we have a hundred and eighteen hours expended for facilities maintenance in thirteen fourteen. That did include a repair, a large repair for damage to electrical and plumbing that was caused by vandals in the middle of the night. So that was most of those hours for the facilities maintenance crew. For the grounds maintenance crew, it's about eight hundred and twelve hours for the year. And then the admin costs are related to, and, and we haven't broken those out specifically for Live Oak Park, but are related to selling of the boat launch fees and managing any of the financial part of it that needs to, to happen. We have the, my admin staff also takes all the reservations for the campground as needed. So revenues from boat launch fees and camping fees for that same timeframe, now remember, expenditures were two hundred and ninety-one thousand, revenues were forty thousand. So the cost of the county to maintain the park and the other boat launches is two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and thirteen. Of that forty thousand, thirty-four thousand was boat launch fees, so that includes all of your boat launches.
How much was that?
Thirty-four thousand. And your camping fees was fifty-eight hundred. So to date, in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, expenditures are about two hundred and fifty-five Man-hours expended to date, there's been thirty-three hours for facilities maintenance. We haven't had as much electrical and plumbing work to do there as we had the year that there was the vandalism. And to date, about four hundred and sixty hours for grounds maintenance. The reason the expenditures are at that point right now is because a large portion of that are A seven costs, which is our administrative and overhead costs. So that is billed out at the beginning of the year as a, and it actually covers the cost from two years ago. The joy of A seven. Revenues to date are twenty-seven thousand, which is, consists of eighteen thousand for boat launch fees, and about eight eight hundred for camping fees. So the camping fees to date are already higher than what they were for last year, and I attribute a lot of that to the campground host and the ability to have someone there all the time. So to date, the cost of the county maintaining the park is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Both of those years had some damage to this boat launch facility. There's some water damage underneath that we've had to repair a couple of times, and that may require sometime in the future, a more permanent solution that might have to be engineered and, and could be a pretty expensive repair, but for now, we keep patching it. Camp host issues, so the board approved a two hundred dollar per month reimbursement for the year-round camp host, and a hundred and fifty dollar per month reimbursement for the backup host that comes during the summer months. Since that time, we have successfully kept a year-round host for over two years. His term is up in August. The way the camp host works is that they can extend, they, they sign an annual contract and they can extend that two times, so three years maximum, and then we prefer to get somebody else, we don't want somebody in there permanently. However, we've been advertising each year for the summer backup host and have had no luck, have been absolutely no applications until this year. We've been advertising for two months now for the backup host, as well as a new camp host, since the three-year term is coming up in August, and we've had one application for the part-time host, none for the full-time host. We will be interviewing that one application this month, and hopefully we'll have a backup host this summer, which will be really good, because otherwise, the campground host handles all of it by themselves, and he just doesn't ever feel like he can get a day off or go anywhere during the busy season. So again, we have not received any applications for that year-round position, and so we may be coming back to the board to seek approval to extend at least one more year, see if we can't come up with applications. It's just, we're competing against larger parks that pay a lot more, so it's difficult, it's really difficult. This one backup host is coming from Michigan, so...
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, you've got to realize, we have better weather.
We have better weather, and they, you know, they want to be out here for the summer, and that's good, but...
It's Michigan.
Yeah, they're, they're not, you know, they don't want to stay here, they live in Michigan, so... At this point, over the last couple of years, no major upgrades have been completed, mostly just been straight maintenance of the campground and boat launch, and, and no improvement projects have been approved by the board of supervisors at this time. So I put together a quick list of some future projects that we would love to do, funding, if funding can be provided somewhere. We'd love to add additional shade structures in the day use area. The current ones were all provided by Eagle Scout Projects, and so we're always open to that kind of project, and we'd love to, to see more of those. We'd love to see the replacement of the concrete picnic tables with expanded metal to match some of the others, replacement of the barbecues and the fire rings, restriping in the parking lot, which I think is a really important one, and then upgraded signage throughout the park. So those are all projects that would really enhance the park, but funding is always an issue, and as you can tell, revenues certainly don't cover the costs. So, any questions?
Too bad Rodgy went in and left.
Yes, Malcolm.
How, how far are your outreach, how do you outreach for the advertising for these positions?
We have a, there's a camp, camp host magazine.
Okay.
That is very, that's where we get almost all of our applications, but we also do all of the local papers, Woodland, Sacramento, so this local area. So we try to get all of the local area and then this campground host magazine, and some of that's online.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's, that answers my question, because I know people who are looking for places around the country to travel during the summer.
Right.
If there are, and if they love fishing, they'd go down to the Fender River, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Would, do they ever do anything through Camping World? Because I know they have stuff like that.
We have hit all of the camping magazines that we can find in any of the...
Well, except that they have a store, that's why I'm saying sometimes they, you know, they have stuff. I just was curious.
Yeah, we have never gone down there and posted anything.
Yes, Jason.
Now, I know you said the revenues were about $40,000, and I saw the cost was at about $291, is that correct? And that $291, is that just the Live Oak?
No, that includes the other boat launches also. But the revenue also includes revenue for, it's boat launch fee for all of those boat launches. So it's kind of combined together, yeah.
So I think the interesting thing, I went through this, especially when we had you guys dealt with the fee. We visited a couple of times, we took a bit of input at that time. It, it looks like it's never going to pencil out. But the Live Oak Park is, is different than the other facilities that you have in that there's a real reason to have a campground host here, which collect, that person can collect fees. It also has the camping and then the boat launch. I think, you know, it's just something you guys could be going... I, I would like to see the park for day use just to have no, no fee. And, and I have, you know, I have personal reason is that I think, you know, for our city and people here, I know that there was an attempt to say, okay, Live Oak people could go in for so many other... All of that is just like, a lot of work for the host to try to figure out. We have people here that never, they don't even know about the park. They live right here in our town. It's really the only access to the river that we have here. Somewhere not like Uba City where, you know, you can go right over to Levy, you know, or over to Marysville and they have the park right alongside, which has free access if you wanted to, and then the park that Uba City put in. But for Live Oak, that's our only access. Everything else, and being on Subuca, you start realizing how much private property you have, not only on this side of the levee, but also on the other side. It's really just, it's a gem, it's a beautiful place. I think that if it was, and just collect for boat launch, which you know when the boat was coming, have a trailer or a boat, and for your camping, that just the increased exposure by just people going down and being able to enjoy the park would also probably, at least in my thinking, would increase, you know, the camping, people going down and spending money for camping. But is, is the buttes. The buttes is just, just a visual type of resource that we have, because you can't access there. And yet, the access to the river is also a little bit restrictive. I think, personally, I just think if you allowed people to, to just go down and use the park, the impacts on the park, it might be a little bit of garbage, you know, but, you know, the grounds is going to be the same. That maintenance is going to be the same. Just the impacts, I just think that it would just increase the, you know, how beautiful that place really is down there. And I understand the budget and, you know, trying to make this thing work. I think that I would like to see those gates opened up and have just free access down there. Not just for Live Oak residents, but for anybody coming in. We put a signage out here on the highway and really start making that park as valuable as the way that we see it. At some time, I'd like to see us put a bike trail that goes out from the city through county, you know, property that county owns. Maybe up to Levy and tie it into a bike trail that goes to Uba City. But use that, use that park as kind of a hub to all of that. I just, I just think that you just have a gem over there that hasn't been unvaried to the polls.
I would agree with you, and that's why I'm going to push that we dedicate that to the city.
That's a...
So that you guys can have those open doorways and promote it and maintain it.
Now you're starting to stand up and stand clear.
I just want, I just, I just want to see gems reexpression when I sit down. You could just like, oh heck no. I know you. But I did want to say is that, Megan, one of the things when we did the airport issue, and obviously the trouble with the airport cost was the cost of A-7 plan. And if you don't know anything about the cost of A-7 plan, it's an accounting principle. And for instance, if I send, you know, a county worker to go and do a simple maintenance job, it'll cost like about a hundred bucks to do that job. Whereas if you send, you know, a volunteer, they get it done within five bucks. And you don't have to go through all the different departments and loopholes that touch that in the process. And so for us, for me, is there any way to get around that cost of A-7 plan for, not just only for Live Oak Riverfront Park, but all of our maintained facilities?
I can look at it, but it's unlikely.
Okay.
It would seem like to me that, you know, we've been in this spot before. You have a part up to the city take it over, and it would seem to me that there's an opportunity here to really work together a lot closer with the Board of Supervisors to really enhance what the park is. I mean, to the city, it would be fantastic. And if we could come up with some kind of a plan that, where you have those little maintenance issues and we have... The lion's club was instrumental in building that. And I'm sure that, you know, we have service organizations here that might be very willing to... And I think it was mentioned that, you know, the last project that was done by some scouts or something like that. I just, I just think that we're really missing out on opportunity by just, you know, just not, by not putting it out on the table and really hammering on this thing.
So right now, what I'm saying is that there's $291,000.
Oh my God, that's a lot of money.
And when you're pulling out $40,000 off your revenue, and where is that $250,000 coming from?
So we stayed there.
And so I have to be able to justify it for my constituents and say, wait, I don't utilize that park up there, all right? And yet, I'm paying for it out of my tax dollars? For what? What's my purpose? I understand it's a, it's a, it's a great facility for Live Oak and it's, you know, charge people for day use or for any other facility uses.
I didn't say that.
It's just not paying for itself right now, you understand? And so, you know, we have to find out. Right now, it's going, probably as good as it's going to get. Obviously, we can look at some additional issues that will enhance it and hopefully bring those costs down. Currently, right now, it's just not paying for itself.
And we, yeah, it isn't. And we understand that. It would be nice. Growing up here, I utilized the boat ramp quite often, did a lot of fishing through there with the family and so forth. I don't remember paying a fee to get there, you know, to go down and swim at the river or whatever. But if we don't charge something, my concern would be, would it be a hangout for, maybe something we don't want to be hanging out down there? And what kind of problems would that actually cause, just the loitering, I guess, down there? But, I mean, yeah, I agree with, with Councilman Bay, you know, Baylin, and I agree with you. But it's like, how can we make it usable? And it's, it's a good facility. I mean, I've gone down there, we've been through it. It's beautiful, it's better than it was 30 something, 40 something years ago. But again, and it is our only access, how can that, how can that work though?
And it's kind of being useful and feasible.
Exactly.
And so that's why I think we have to look at, opportunity ways of finding, of finding funding resources to make it happen.
And you've got to realize, you know, Live Oak is, our economy is, our residents don't make a lot of money. So to be able to go down there, it is harder for them. And so you're getting more of your salmon fishing and those types of things, more so than actually people going down there for a day use. So I do know a couple of families that every year they hold their family reunion there and that sort of stuff. Water hookups for the RVs. It's a great place, it's a great facility to be at. But again, you know, it would be nice to see that, like, you know...
Well, when you drop over the other side of the levee over there, your whole, the whole world just changes.
It does, it does.
And my, from my point is that if you really use that as an access to the river, you're actually doing, a lot of your property owners, those people that are saying that, you know, I don't use that park, you're actually doing a lot of favors for, from people doing trespassing or, you know, trying to get to the river crossing over private property. So I think that, you know, I just think that it's just a gem.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand completely. I think with a quarter of a million dollar shortfall, we have to be mindful of what we're asking for here. And I think especially as a small city, we're asking for things to be priorities. And Brenda's got a great idea about trying to market it and see if we can't get a larger headcount through there, increase the revenue against that number. It's going to be many, many moons before we get that to pencil out correctly, as Gary said. Personally, I'd much rather have y'all help us out with the Highway 99 funding.
Absolutely.
Don't worry about Riverfront Park. We'll, we'll cover that. Can you just get us a wider wide highway? We'll take care of everything else.
We see how this works though.
A wide highway will bring more people, right?
It could, it'll really help with your forward...
We got this covered.
More boats.
It's the highway we need to do first.
You know, you build it and they will come. You see, that's how it works, right?
The Chair. I think the bottom line here is, is we've all just decided, in order to cover this thing, perhaps Live Oak and the good civic organizations, as well as you folks that live here, could be thinking in terms of maybe fishing derbies or activities of some sort that would advertise and/or bring people to Live Oak to want to use the facility. And of course, I think that once you get folks there and they're happy with what they saw, they'll tell someone else. And who knows? I, it's always easy to figure out on Monday why we lost the game on Sunday. But it would seem to me that Live Oak has a responsibility, if they want to take advantage of the true asset that they have, to really enterprise and get someone jacked up about trying to organize, why should we go there?
Well, bringing on that subject, we have a 5K in June that goes from the high school parking lot, down Pennington Road, over the levee, around by the boat ramp and back. And we have had people run this 5K and say, I've never been there before, this is a neat place, I'm going to come back here. So you're right, we've got to market it. And Brenda, we, you know, welcome your help and sure they do and we do support for that, yes.
The Chair, how much of this information as far as fees and who to contact and all of that do we have on our city website currently? Because that would be a way that we could probably help facilitate this in a fashion, please.
Without pulling up the site, I can't tell you exactly what we have. I think we have a contact number probably, but certainly we'll work with Megan to look at how we can improve that.
I think that would be incumbent on us as a city to try to do that and see what we can't do to increase the visitor ship, the revenue.
And their projects.
I think the Elder has a beautiful idea as far as the onus is upon us as a citizenry and as the leadership to take that first step and get it moving, certainly before we come to you and ask for you to back a project, that we're not ready and moving on our own.
We also have a pretty good public information officer that gets out a lot of information.
See, he's booking otherwise.
Maybe we can partner with him.
And so you can definitely utilize our public information officer as well.
We're going to hold you to that.
No problem.
So there was no figure on, on the day use? Was there, how much debt brought in to the park?
The, what we have is boat launch fees and camping fees. That's the way they're divided out. It isn't truly day use or annual.
And so, I mean, I just, it's obvious even between council people here that, you know, I'm fighting and beating the dead horse for whatever reason. At $5 per, but, but, yeah, it is money, but it has to be limited amount. It seems to me that if you expose that park, that would make up for it more. And what really brings in revenue is the camping. And I don't know how many $5 bills you might in a hundred or 200, but that, I'm sure that that doesn't make a major impact on anybody's budget. And I really don't like it being, you have a subject here that gets kind of, kind of pushed off to the side by, you know, other projects. But, and it makes it so that we don't look at this as, as an opportunity. This, you know, this is something that's been pushed over because it's not the priorities after. But at $5 for a day use, it seems like to me that, I would imagine that you're not bringing any more than maybe 500 bucks a year or something like that.
I can go back and see if they can divide it out. I don't believe that we can divide it out versus the boat launch fees.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, we use our imagination.
Because people don't really put on the envelopes whether they're there just for a day or whether they're coming in for, to launch a boat. It's the same price.
Yes. If you go camping anywhere else, I think we're cheaper than anybody else.
We are.
Oh, yes.
It's very cheap, it's a very clean park. At five bucks, if I was going in there and safe and clean, five bucks to me.
But that's not camping, Larry. I mean, I'm talking about somebody going, you know, pulling off the highway, wanting to go over here and buy a sandwich at Subway and go down there and eat a sandwich at picnic table. Or take, you know, when I have my grandkids here, we go down and that's the only place we can go and take them down to the water.
Now, it is $5 a car, so you can...
That's cheap.
It's cheap, it's cheap.
Pile 'em in the trunk.
I think you made a good point.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Quick comment.
Did pull up the website, we actually do have pretty detailed information on the site about the Riverfront Park.
People weren't happy to consult with Megan and Chuck about how to approve that if we're missing information. It's actually pretty detailed.
Perfect.
It's fine though, you're paying more for that Subway sandwich than you are for the day use.
The Chair, before we get off, in closing, as such, I always remember driving down 99 and I see a sign that says, "Lake Mendon," and it talks about why I used to go to Lake Mendon. All the times that I was raised in the Live Oak area, on the line, most of it, I have yet to see a sign that says, "Wonderful Live Oak Park."
Well, you know, bring, saying, we are working on signage as we speak in time. So that might be something we're looking at. So we're getting there. You saw, Live Oak's not a sleepy little town like a lot of people think. We actually are moving and shaking some things up, and a lot of it is in the background, so...
One thing you might want to do is really advertise right now, since you can't launch a boat at the Marysville one you mentioned.
Oh, there you go.
Put the word out.
Yes.
Through the Chair, you know, possibly, perhaps we could, could work with the Chamber and the city and have an event that would educate people in our city and our area about the park and about the facilities that we have. And maybe have a weekend, for instance, where it's free to the public to come on down and check out the facilities and...
Just like three national park days?
And draw them in and let them see what we have. And then they have a reason to come back and spend that $5 and come bring their grandkids for the afternoon or something like that.
Chuck, do you remember when we had down at the Riverfront Park, it had something to do with jousting, medieval? We actually did something...
Renaissance.
Renaissance Day, yes. And they had full breakfast down there and all. So, yeah, something like that, maybe you're right, through Chamber, bring me back.
I know Chamber would be very interested in participating.
Yes.
With seeing that park develop from like four years ago to where it is now, it's been like this, a roller coaster. You have 1,400 people at that park on that Renaissance.
Yes, we did.
And it benefited the community. As a county owner, I understand that. I also understand the cost associated with the county prohibiting people... I also understand the cost and the, the county prohibited the park, but you're, you're grouping, I like to see separate figures. The boat launch is utilized as a boat launch, there's other boat launches, and you're grouping the camping fees and the day use fees, I agree with charging, I really do. It's, you have to. But I'd like to see the actual figures separated out to see how much it actually costs the county. I think that's the only park that the county has for camp, for camping. And the rest of them are nothing but boat launches. And when you said $8,000 in camping fees, what changed from $3,000 for a whole year to $8,000 for a quarter? Something wrong.
An onsite host collecting those fees?
Yes.
So, we're not losing the fees to dishonesty?
It's underutilized, it really, it really is.
And I think, I think the marketing might help.
There was a time in that park when we had the half a million dollar motorhomes towing the show cars and parking down there for two weeks. And it was a little gym, we had people from Oregon, Washington, Nevada, and they were, it benefited the community, it benefited the county also indirectly, but that's no more.
And I, yeah, I, I like what Councilman Banks said we need to get the Chamber involved and do that, so, yeah, very good. Some great ideas. Anybody else before we close up tonight? I really want to thank you guys for everything at the fire station again and the substation. It's a beautiful facility. I think it's important that our deputies that work here at Live Oak are proud of the station to work out of. That has been my goal since on here and it's finally come around. The seed was planted when I was mayor the first time and it came around and it blossomed and it grew and I'm mayor again and I got to actually be here and do that, so it's great. So, thank you, Jamarcus, for being here and everybody out there.
To the chair.
Yes.
We didn't introduce our new council.
Oh, very.
She's our new county council. That would be working with, so I think you're welcome.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. I'll be here.
All right, and I will adjourn this great study session at 7:36.